It's six o'clock and I'm calling the planning and zoning commission meeting of August 17th, 2023 to order. Can we bring on school call?
Here. President. Mike Marone. Manuel Lathil.
Here.
Johnny Narvise.
President.
Yuxin Wang.
Here.
Dejina Portillo. Daniela Salpas.
Here.
Mark Alguil. For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to excuse those commissioners?
Motion to excuse.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every human interest for all. We've been on to the consider approval of minutes of, we have two meetings, July 20th, 2023, and August 3rd, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes for July 20th and August 3rd.
We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Salpas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Citizen comments? You have a card here. Is it for a particular item or is it general comment?
So, Mr. Chairman, yes, we do have comments. I believe that there might be some people here that want to speak on a particular item that I have on director's comments. So it's just a matter of how you want to do it. If you want to bring that up so we can talk about that or just go through the cards and let him speak at the beginning.
Okay. Which item is that? Do you want to consider moving up?
I'll make a motion to move up 10A.
Second.
The motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. We've had a, we have an applicant that has a business at, on Sanders Street and we have it here at 1702, but it's actually 3702. 3702. The request was to get a conditional use permit for, from an R3 to B1, okay? Which would mean that he would be doing B1 use in the building. We come to find out that it's actually a kitchen that's like a commissary, which is a B4 use, right? So you can't go from
B1 to a B1.
R3 to a B4. So you'd have to do stair step it. You'd have to go B1, get the B1. And if you, if you get the B1, then you can do a conditional use permit for that service. So, so it didn't even qualify to be put on the agenda. So, but we, we did post and there's people here, I believe, that want to speak on this item. So what I did was I put it as a, a director's report so I can explain why we pulled it because it wasn't it wasn't eligible. Thank you. It wasn't eligible. So, yes, we have this facility that I believe it's been open for three years. And they need to come in and get their zone change and, and possibly plat, if I'm not mistaken.
Potentially.
Potentially, they would have to replat also. So I'll leave it open to anybody who would like to speak.
So I am going to open up the public hearing. I do have one witness card in front of me. That person's name is Diana Hernandez. I don't know if you'd like to come up and, is this a reference to this? Okay.
Good evening. Diana Hernandez.
If you can move to the middle.
In the middle?
Yes.
I speak very loudly. You can probably hear me anyway. Okay. So anyway, Diana Hernandez, I'm here to, it's more of a comment and a little frustration about that specific property. It's a 3702 Sanders. And I go, it's right around the block from my house. I go walking every day and I would see. It was very noticeable when they started planning to build something there. And, and that was good. Someone was going to, you know, make use of that piece of property. They removed the, a gas meter that would have ended up being in the middle of the plant, the foundation that they laid. So they did that like at 10:30 at night. They were out there working on that, which I thought was odd, but okay. And they laid the foundation. But, and there was no plumbing, no, nothing. And so also no building permit. So I called planning and zoning and I spoke to a gentleman. And he said that he would send someone. Well, a couple of days later, he said, give me a few days and then call me back. So I did. Well, they did post. By then they had a building permit, which was backdated to the day before I called. And it said detached garage. And I thought, well, that's a huge slab of cement for a detached garage. It's bigger than the house that's there. And so I called Mr. Rosso again and I told him that it was very obvious that it was probably going to be a warehouse. And with, he says, well, I, we don't know. And I wonder what it's going to be and what do you think it's going to be? And I'm going like, you're planning and zoning. It should be written. You should have all the specs. You should know what that building is going to be used for. But he said, well, no, we'll, we'll have to see what happens. And I said, well, what happens if, you know, like, well, no. I called again because that call ended, right? And so then the walls went up and you could see the walls were like 18, 20 feet high. It was not a detached garage. It was going to be a warehouse. And so I called again and he, again, he said the same thing, you know, well, we don't know what they're going to do. And I told him literally at that point, I said, well, you should have all that information with you. And then he got a little offended and he says, well, we'll just have to see what they're going to do because that's what they wrote. And I said, so what happens if it's already built? And then it is a warehouse. It's not a detached garage. And he says, well, they'll just have to apply for it for, and I said, so that's it? I said, they just apply for it? He says, yes. And I said, so all they do is they go, you shouldn't have done that, right? And so it was a warehouse for a while. And then later on, it just eventually they started cooking. And you can tell because it smells delicious. You can smell the food. And, but then maybe a month ago, they had a fire. And so the fire department came and they closed them up. And they were closed for maybe one or two days. And then they started cooking again, but they would cook like at 10 o'clock at night. They would come in to cook. And so to this day, they are still cooking. They do have the provisional thing outside. But it, it's just, you know, it went from a detached garage to a warehouse to now a kitchen. And it's just frustrating that I didn't mention this from the very beginning and nothing was ever done. And it's just a comment, you know, as somebody who lives in the area, I mean, it was just, it's a residential. And now eventually it will be a B4?
B4 use, yeah.
B4 use. And that's just, that's just what I wanted to make a comment that they were notified from day one that that was happening and nothing was done. So I was just voicing my frustration.
And just point of clarification, I believe when you said you were calling the city, you were calling the building department. Reese says planning and zoning and I'm like, oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I think it was Mr. Rosso that I spoke to.
Okay, zoning officer, yes.
Thank you.
Well, that's who they directed me to. That's why.
Absolutely.
That's why I spoke to him. So that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you all know the frustration. And thank you very much for listening.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this item or has anything different to say?
So, Mr. Chair, when they reapply, we'll renotice the neighborhood. So they'll know, once again, they'll get a, a yellow card and they'll know they can come forward and speak on this item. And we also, we had a meeting with the zoning officers, fire department, ourselves, building, to just try to understand what, what happened here. How did it get this far to this point with adding permits and things? So we're, we're investigating that as we speak.
Yeah, because I, I don't understand how they even spotted. If the lady is correct and she called whoever, building, they would have documentation of what it's going to be or whatever the situation is. And for him to throw foundation, walls and all this and not be able to give her an answer, it's shame on, on us, on our, the city. Because that should already be filed, put away. It's not a guessing game. Then we wouldn't have to have this board up here making decisions on where, what, why things are built and how they're built.
Will they be allowed to operate?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, are they still going to be allowed to operate during all this time that even? So we had a discussion with building and fire and we were, we were talking to the building official about possibly going out and removing their meter. So they stop being that they're operating and they don't have a CO or, or any kind of permit to be operating. But that's, that's at the building official level. But in our case, I looked at this from what is the agenda? And whether they comply, they didn't. That's why I pulled it. But there's still discussion. I know fire was out there because they had a call. So they recognized, they, they actually visually saw inside, there's some things that need, that need to be worked on. So there's, there's things that have to be done there. But the building official is the one that makes the final call whether he wants to build, pull the, the meter or not. And he's, unfortunately, he's not here. He's in, he's at a conference right now. So he was able to make it, but Mr. Lozano is here from the building department that, that could give you a little update about, he, actually, he's been around long enough to know the history of this.
I have a question. Is it the same owners? And
It's the same owners, yes.
Good evening. Roland Lozano with the building department. I'm the right-of-way manager. When we look back at this, how it evolved, there was a complaint. There was one complaint that we addressed. At the moment of enforcing, we're going to issue a stop work. However, they did have a permit at that point with an affidavit notarized that it was going to be residential. So at the time, it was still, I have the application and all that and I believe we have it digitally. So at the time, there was no, still they hadn't done anything other than trying to build and which they had a permit for. So there's no regulation on how big you could do a residential warehouse, which is what they had applied for without any electrical. And so they, they put on the application, storage warehouse. And we have a signed letter, the saying from the owner that the purpose of this will be residential use. So later, after, obviously, now that there's a fire, obviously, right now, we're enforcing that they cannot operate a business in an R3, especially without a certificate of occupancy. So that enforcement is coming through. And as Mr. Navarro pointed out, that, you know, it is the building officials deal here on this. But I'm just here representing the building in case you guys have any questions. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a question for legal. Is there a legal verification?
Yeah, I'm not sure what specifically. And I have to get with zoning, building, and I guess health and whoever else may be involved to see what violations would be present. And then that would determine what kind of enforcement action we'd be able to bring. Typically, if it gets bad enough, we can do something like a temporary restraining order or a temporary injunction to prevent them from operating until they come into compliance with all applicable codes and ordinances. So that would be the, the enforcement mechanism that we'd probably use here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, the only other concern is, is prior to any kind of construction regardless, paperwork needs to be put up, permits need to be put up and all this. When they already had started it, there was nothing put up. So a day after she called in, complained about it, and then the following day, according to the story, everything was put up with a day.
Backdated.
Yeah, backdated.
Okay, we have October 21st, 2020, at 9:19 a.m. That's when we received a 311. And all this, I believe, we have in a digital copy. I don't know if you guys can see all of it.
No.
So
Oh, here, here. There you go.
So this is a 311. So we addressed, I mean, obviously, we could go enforce all of City of Laredo, what's out of compliance, but we just don't have them.
Yeah.
So as complaints come in, we'll address them. And so what happens is, at the time, we have to make a determination. Is it in compliance? Is it not in compliance with the code? And, and so we were about to issue a stop work when it just became a warning here. There's affidavit. I don't know what you call this, but basically it's signed and notarized at the owner and residential. Property will be used for residential purposes. We have no intention of using it for anything else. That's, that's how it was written. So at the time, is it in compliance? They have a permit at that time. So since then, obviously, it's not in compliance and we're addressing that. So that's where we're standing now on that. And right now, our course is, we typically have in cases like this before, we'll ask them nicely, you need to cease and desist, right? Like stop. They don't do it, then we can go to a more formal way of temporary restraining orders or temporary judgment. So.
I just asked a question, just so you know, that the city and the building department is doing everything they can to make sure that it is compliant. So it wasn't that they missed it, but timelines and everything else. But they're on it. They've been on it since the very beginning.
For the record, it was never, ever, ever used for residential purpose.
Yeah, that's, that's a different story.
Right. And they did what, what was on paper. That's what I'm trying to say.
And there may have been some communication that wasn't communicated completely, but I don't know who, who she was speaking with and what information she was getting. But when we did go back and do the research, I just, you know, this is what I found.
Thank you.
And so we're addressing.
Thank you. Can I move on to the regular items? Okay, so we're going to move on to public hearing recommendation, recommendation of an ordinance, item 6A. Amending the City of Laredo Land Development Code, Section 24.63.2, identify reception hall, either indoor or outdoor as permitted uses, Section 24-65.14 and 24-65.15, to provide enclosed structure and separation distance requirements in B3 and B4 zones respectively. Section 24-94.5, to allow properties, zoned historic residential office, HRO, to apply for a conditional use permit for a reception hall outdoor use and providing distance requirement exception exemption and a vending appendix A to provide a definition for reception hall, indoor or outdoor, and providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing for severability clause and providing for publication and effective date.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I have Assistant Director Vanessa Perez who Guerra, sorry. Freudian slips. You'd like to, Freudian slip.
I have to sit up there though.
The presentations.
You can pick up the sciences.
Liar.
Liar.
Stress.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the issue at hand is that recently we've been experiencing increased interest in reception hall type activities in our historic district, the St. Peters Historic District. And they're currently not allowed. Any of those, any type of reception hall, entertainment venue, those sorts of activities are currently not allowed by the predominant zoning in that area. Council on July 31st, July 31st, 2023, council directed staff to develop a draft ordinance to allow RO zones, residential office zones, properties located within the St. Peters Historic District to be able to apply for conditional use permit for outdoor reception hall type uses. So just a quick reminder, residential office zoning is intended to allow for mix of residential office and light business uses, including schools, offices, residential, retirement homes, restaurants, medical and dental clinics, some institutional uses, including orphanages and churches, and personal and business services, including drugstore, home occupations and similar type uses. Historic residential office, that's the, again, the predominant zone of our St. Peters District. And that you just have a map showing sort of the boundaries of our historic St. Peters District. So a quick overview of the current ordinance. The, the land development code identifies amusement services, either indoor or outdoor. It does not identify reception halls. Historically, reception hall uses have been categorized as amusement services. The minimum zoning requirements regarding these types of uses are for amusement services indoors. The minimum would be a B3 or community business district. And amusement services outdoors would be B4 highway commercial district. RO zoning does not permit amusement services either indoor or outdoor. RO zones may apply for a conditional use permit for amusement services indoor. RO may not apply for outdoor amusement services. Those are B4 type uses. And the, it requires, the code requires a minimum B1 zoning to apply for a CUP for amusement services outdoors. So just to recap all of that, to establish an amusement service in the historic residential office district, if you want to do an indoor amusement service, you would either do a straight-up zone change to B3 or you could apply for a conditional use permit. Those are your two alternatives for indoor amusement services. And then amusement services outdoors, you would have to apply for a B4 zone change. Or again, as Mr. Navarro said, you'd have to stair step. You'd need a zone change to B1. And then you'd apply for a conditional use permit for the outdoor. Again, just to go over, outdoor with zoning means that any use-related activity happens outside of a wholly enclosed structure, permanent structure. So just a reminder again, council directed us to, to develop a draft ordinance to allow the RO zones within the St. Peters District to be able to apply for those, for the CUP for the outdoor reception hall use.
And it's only restricted to that area?
That's right. Yeah. Because HRO is only located
Located there.
That's the only place it's, it's located. So the proposed ordinance intends to identify reception halls and the required zoning. It'll define a reception hall use. It'll provide structure and distance requirements. And it will allow the HRO zone to apply for reception hall outdoor use. So number one, the identification, reception hall indoor will be allowed as a use by right in your AE, CBD, B3, B4, M1, M2, and MXD. And then the outdoor reception halls will be allowed in B4, M1, M2, MXD. This is a straight up echo of the amusement services. It's exactly the same. I included the chart there so that you could see exactly, we're adding the reception hall. You have it in your packet as well, so you can see it more clearly. And you'll see exactly, as I mentioned in the front of previous slide, the zones where it will be allowed as a use by right. So the next thing, we're going to define reception hall. Reception hall will be defined as an establishment whose sole purpose is to be rented or leased by an individual or groups to accommodate privately sponsored events, which are not open to the general public and do not charge an admission fee of any type for entry into the event or establishment. These establishments may include kitchen facilities for the preparation or catering of food and on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages only during scheduled events and are not open to the general public. Examples of these sorts of events that may be held here are not limited to social and business events, banquets, wedding receptions, anniversaries, graduation parties, bar mitzvahs, and other similar celebrations. So we wanted to try to make sure that we differentiated these from dance halls and bars. So these are not open to the general public. That's the, the big differentiator in those cases. In B3 zones, we're going to add some language that the reception halls indoors are permitted, provided that the use is conducted within wholly enclosed permanent structure and that outdoor music, reception hall activities conducted outdoors and on-premise living quarters are prohibited. In B4 zones, reception halls outdoors are permitted, provided that the use is located 300 feet from an R district and the measurement to be made along the property lines of the street fronts and from front door of the reception hall to the boundary of the nearest R district in a direct line across intersections. So that, that's where we're providing those distance requirements. So even if you are in a B4, because of the outdoor nature of those reception hall uses, want to make sure that we have a little bit of a buffer between any adjoining residential districts. And finally, properties located within the historic residential, properties currently zoned historic residential office may seek conditional use status for reception hall outdoor uses. And because St. Peters is residential, there is an exception to the distance requirement. So the 300-foot requirement is going to be exempted in the, in the case of the conditional use permit. And with that, there's the proposed motion. We haven't answered any questions.
I have a couple. So if it's an outdoor reception, it has to be connected to an indoor facility?
It, it typically will have
Can I say, I'm going to go, you know, I'm going to close the street and have a reception?
Not close the street because that's public right-of-way.
Oh, yeah.
It's public right-of-way. So you'd have to have permission from city hall to close the street.
But I, but if you got permission, you're able to
But you would have, it's all, this is all within private property boundaries so that you could conduct reception-related activities outside. So let's say you could put a, set up a band outside. You could have the wedding outside. Whatever reception hall-related activities, they don't have to be all within the enclosed structure. They can occur outside of the enclosed structure, but within the property boundaries.
Bathrooms and everything, according to the property size, I have to have so many bathrooms?
That's correct.
But just, this is a perfect example of when you're changing an ordinance, what has to happen. So in this case, we were asked by council. So we had to define it. And then once, once it's defined, then it, we have to break it down into its sections, where it can be put. And so it has to go through all those steps. And then we have to present it to you. Then we can take it to council. So it's, in changing an ordinance, it's, it's a, it's a process. And I know that Ms. Guerra here was assigned this and she's been at it for a month at least, just trying to get the wording right and everything because it's what has to happen.
I think it's a good idea, but in some areas, the M1s or anything else that's connected, close by to residential or anything like that, to have an outdoor event with bands and all that, it's going to be disturbing the peace all over the place. So we're going to go back to problems. And then when you have jumbus and all that, it's a completely separate because they're out and out. Basically, the same thing you're doing here, but you're putting, you're putting the language to it. But when they start doing it in different areas and because they're M1s or whatever, you're private property. I'm going to have a band. Then now you're, you're creating, you're creating a little monster here, in my opinion.
But it's only in the historic?
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So the reception halls will be allowed in all the, the zones that I mentioned. The indoor will be allowed in the B3, M1, M2, MXD, and the outdoor B4. So as a use by right, they'll be allowed in the zones that, that we talked about. But with regard to the conditional use permit, the historic district, the St. Peters District will be allowed to apply directly for that, for that outdoor reception hall use, which is a B4, which currently they're not allowed to.
They're not allowed to.
Yeah.
And, and you're correct. So with this, having a, to get a permit, you would have to go to council. You know, council ultimately will determine whether they get it or not. So this is not something, like she says, So, this is not something, like she says, that you have the right. Well, if you have the right zone, you can do it there. In this case, anybody who's applying, they must go to council first. Actually, P&amp;Z and council to get approval. So, there's still that denial process if, you know, they don't want it in the area.
I think it's like a process that had to be done, because there's similar, I think, places that have something like this. And I don't know if they went through all, and they have restrictions and everything, like you state in the amendments, so...
Being involved in different outdoor organizations, we don't go and do all this to get permits for jumbus or outdoor bands or civic center. It's an easier process. Now, we're making a jump hurdle in...
Well, for example, here in the St. Peters area, you have somebody who remodels the house. It's ideal for small weddings and things of that nature. As it stands today, they cannot do the business.
But they're doing it anyway. There's downtown, there's houses downtown that have wedding parties outside. I've been to several.
In the St. Peters area?
Yes.
Yes, those are, those are being done illegally. So, that's, that's what's going on here.
That's why you're like dotting your i's and crossing your t's with this.
You know, the council directed us, because they're seeing that, and they're saying, look, you know, how are we going to expand? How are we going to do anything? If we can't even get the right language for them to do it, so that's why this is happening.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a comment. But here on number 13, it does talk about live music being prohibited, or outdoor music?
Yeah, the indoor, the indoor reception hall is predicated that the use is conducted, all use-related activities are inside.
Only inside.
It has to be within a wholly enclosed permanent structure. It's the outdoor, the outdoor reception hall that is the B4 use, that they can have things outside. But within the property boundaries, but just outside of the structure.
If there's no other comments or questions, what's the recommendation of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you just, a public hearing, if you just want to ask for against?
No, I can say, motion to keep on studying.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody has a comment either for or against this, you can come up forward and speak. If not, it can close public hearing, and then we can go forward with the motion.
Motion to approve.
So, a motion for recommendation?
Recommendation.
Second, you have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 1, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located north of Markey Lane and east of Marco Drive from M1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agricultural District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does it bring, do we have, Mr. Laredo? Our property location, Lot 1, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located north of Markey Lane and east of Marco Drive. Background, the city council directed staff to initiate the zone change. Zone change request is from an M1 to an AG. Proposed use is unspecified. Letter sent to were 67, and we have none for, none against. Location view? Area view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? Floodway map? And the recommendation, this staff does not support. And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item? It's okay. It's all right. Anybody who would speak against this item? Can you give some background as far as?
So, Mr. Chairman, these properties, the next, this one and the next two properties, once again, council has directed us to initiate a zone change on this. So, we have, since then, so, so we did bring it here to council, to the commission. The commission suggested that we table this item for two months, so that the owners of properties can, you know, at least do their homework or whatever they have to do. So, we've ended to two months, right? So, we're bringing it back. Since that time, my understanding is the city of Laredo has purchased one property, and it'd be the property with the basketball court. We can clarify that. I think that's what we're going to clarify here. So, that one is, but the city still would like to go forward with the zone change on it. Okay, so that's why we're here. So, but that's where we're at, and then we can take it to council.
But staff is still not supporting it?
Okay.
Why does staff not support it? Without knowing what's going to be used, what's proposed?
The last time, I think, it was because the city, right, is the one proposing the zone change. And normally, the...
Owner.
The owner proposes a zone change, right? But this is, this is the one that's the flooded area, right? Right? How do you say it, flooded?
Floodway.
Floodway. This is in a floodway, okay? So, and it's in schedule, like an M1. And it's not, it can't be used like an M1, okay? So, that's why she's putting, like, city wants to change it to the AG. And I, and I think she wanted to stand up, because I don't know if it was the A or the B or the C that corresponds to her. And they were saying, no, 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 it's the next one, it's the next one. So, I don't know if she has something to say.
Sure, you go ahead.
Well, that was my question. Brenda, that was my question. Why are they wanting to change it?
Because it's in a float, and it's in a flood zone. And it's in an unbuildable creek. Whatever you put there, when it rains, okay, it goes all the way up to the houses. So, whatever structure, whatever warehouse, whatever, anything you put there is in risk, okay? And in the appraisal, if you go into the appraisal, it states unbuildable creek. So, since the beginning, it has been marked M1 erroneously.
Yes, but it'll, it'll decrease our value, and that's our problem. You know, as far as if we want, if we wanted to sell it, for example, the city offered us some money to buy it. And now, because of this, they've stepped back. But I'm sure it's because of the value. That would definitely hurt our value.
Which property is yours, I'm sorry?
B, C, and D.
C, and, C and D?
Just for the record, Lot 1 is the one that the city has already purchased?
My understanding, it's Lot 1, which is not your lot, right? Lot 1 is the one with the basketball court?
We sold it.
You sold that?
It was ours, yeah.
Okay, it was.
So, do you still own 2, 3, 4, and 5?
Yes.
Thank you.
And my father, for 15 years, let the city use it at no cost, zero rent. We were paying the taxes for 15 years. And now, they're wanting to do this, which is ridiculous, you know? So, I had to come. We're from Dallas. I drove here for that purpose. I know my dad would be very upset.
At this point, you stand against the zone change for VNC?
As the landlord's.
As the landlord.
As the landlord, yes. And, and also the issue, I think you didn't come there. I, I think the issue was that this had never been put on the P&amp;Z or this action had never been done. But legally, we ask legal, and legal can explain, that they normally don't do it, but they are in the right to do it. When they have the, how do you say it? Los, lo que pesa es que está dentro del floodway.
Regardless, if they change it, that property is never going to be...
Never going to be able to do anything.
And that's okay. But we just don't want the zone change. We don't. I mean, it's going to hurt our value. I'm a real estate broker, and I know it's definitely going to hurt our value. And that's why I'm against it. I feel like that's the least the city could do after us letting them use it for 15 years at no cost. Just out of the kindness of his heart. He said they could use it, so.
Thank you.
Grant free.
Is there any questions for staff or comments?
I just had a comment. As far as the sale's concerned for this particular item, has that closed already? Has that...
The first one did.
The first one.
So, they offered us, offered to buy the other two, but then they backed out. I'm assuming because of this.
Okay, so the...
Because it would decrease, I mean, it'll...
Just for clarification, that the action that we're asking them to take on specifically B, which is Unit 1, is to change the zone from M1 to AG.
So, it's already sold.
Since that's not yours anymore officially, they can take action on that if they want.
Yeah.
But you're, but then the next two items are...
Because it's attached. I mean, it's right next to it.
Okay. But just for clarity, that they did close, and city owns it now?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I just wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're, now we're focused on item 6B. If there's no other questions, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against or for? All right. If there's no other questions or comments from the commission, what are, which is the commission?
For B?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Subject to...
So, you're making a motion to support the zone change?
Support the zone change.
You have a motion? Like commissioners have asked, do I have a second?
No.
Motion dies.
I make a motion to support the staff recommendation.
A second.
You have a motion, Commissioner O'Hara, and a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carry. Oh, you have one against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6C. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lots 2 and 3, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located south of Carlton Road and east of Anna Avenue from M1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agriculture District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have a Haddas family investment, Allosi as owner, and City of Laredo as applicant. Property location, Lots 2 and 3, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located south of Carlton Road and east of Anna Avenue. Background, the city's council directed staff to initiate the zone change. Zone change request is from M1 to AG. Proposed use is unspecified. Letter sent is 6. We have none for and one against. Location view? Area view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? Floodway map? And the recommendation, this staff does not support. And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? Against? Yes. Anybody who wishes to speak against? Any questions from the commission, comments? If not, we can make a motion on the second.
Motion to, to support the staff, is that not supporting it?
I'll second that. So, we have a motion to support staff recommendation of not the zone change. From Commissioner Garcia, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner O'Hara. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6B. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lots 4 and 5, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located south of Markey Lane and east of Anna Avenue from M1 Light Manufacturing District to AG Agriculture District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Haddas family, you know, Allosi owner, City of Laredo applicant. Property location, Lots 4 and 5, Paso de Norte Industrial Park, Unit 1, located south of Markey Lane and east of Anna Avenue. Background, city council directed staff to initiate the zone change. Zone change request, M1 to AG. Proposed use unspecified. Letter sent 46, none for, one against. Location view? Area view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? Floodway map? And recommendation, this staff does not support. And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? There's no questions or comments from the commission? What sort of action would the commission like to take?
The only thing that I want to say, and say, and say, and say, it's in a flood zone. I know when they bought the property, it was in an M1. And, and a lot of properties are grandfathered in because there's warehouses right on, on the way, right? But in this particular area, you can't build anything. I know you might think that they want to do it because of a purpose, right? But I really think it, there may be helping that you won't do anything there that will affect later on. That's my personal... No, no. The thing is that it, it should be, in my, in my critique, is it should be an AG because nothing can be built there. It's a risk.
I want to comment, a quick comment. I agree with her 100%. You know, you're against it. Regardless of what you bring, it's never going to happen. Because that area, there's an area, there's no, they'll never get a permit yet from us to build anything on it because it's on a flood plain. That's all I want to say. And that's okay. But I know what, I know what she says. She's just trying to protect, just in case, to let you know. But at the end of the day, it's, it's flood plain that it won't, nothing can be built.
You can't build anything. If, if the building, if, if the city doesn't acquire it, nobody else can come here and acquire it to build something on it. Because it's in a flood zone.
That's all.
That, that's the only...
And that's okay.
Both commissioners, you know, I, both commissioners have a point. However, as, as a landlord, I have to side with the person here on because it's their property. And they can, they can definitely choose whether, whether to not downzone or to keep the zone. And whether they sell or don't sell, it's still their right. And I understand the city also has a right to force it.
Has a right to force it.
But I have to stand and say that I have to support the city.
But I'm just letting you know that it'd be hard.
It's a hard position.
But me and a worker, I know exactly what it's going to do to the value, and I don't, I don't think it's fair, especially after we allowed the city to use it for so long. I think that's not my ass.
Oh, if you'd like to, if you'd like to submit for the record, just if you want to come up and just say what you said, just to make it for the record.
It's on, it's on audio. We're going, we're live right now.
We're live.
So, regardless of what you're saying, I get it and everything. But being a real estate broker, I know that how bad it's going to affect our value. And I just feel like it's a slap in the face. You know, after my dad allowed the city to do that, you know, use it for so long for free, which I didn't even agree with that at the, at the time. But he, out of the kindness of his heart, he wanted to let the city use it. And now, to redo, to do that to him after he did that is really insulting, honestly. I mean, I just feel like it's, you know, it's our property, and that's just what we want. I don't, I don't see...
Understandable.
It's understandable. I just wanted to clarify.
And I just wanted to stress that too. Because it, I mean, I literally drove here because I was like, no, I have to get my point across. This is not fair. You know, I...
And ours are just a recommendation, so it still goes...
It's just a recommendation. You still go to council, and they are the ones...
You'll have to drive back for the city council.
And I don't mind. I'll do it. No problem.
And how long has your family owned these properties?
About 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just for a point of clarification, on this property, you can't build a building, but it, you can put a parking lot on it. So, it...
But if you put a parking lot, in the past, until 2010, 2010, I think, when the water grew, the 18-wheelers were, were all over the place, and they were affecting the bridges and exactly. So, they just want to prevent this.
That's the responsibility of the office. Yeah.
One other thing. So, if it's such a problem, then why...
Why didn't they address it before?
Why, no, no. Why didn't the city follow through with their offer? You know? I don't, I don't get it.
Well, I don't know.
It withdrew the offer immediately while all this is going on.
Thanks. Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, can I have some sort of action from the commission?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and accept the staff recommendation and deny the zone change.
We have a motion by Commissioner O'Hara and a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6E. Amending the zoning ordinance... Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 0.059 acres being the fourth, being the north, 46.05 feet of north, 92.10 feet of Lot 10 and Lot 91, situated in the western division of City of Laredo. Webb County, Texas, such property fronting 55.56 feet on East Alamo Street and extending south for depth along San Francisco Avenue, 46.05 feet, as described in gift deed dated October 2nd, 1975, recorded in volume 497, pages 979 to 982. Webb County deed records, Texas, located at 419 East Alamo Street from R3, mixed residential district to B1 limited business district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Edith Limon owner and Cynthia Limon as applicants. Property location, we have approximately 0.059 acres located at 419 East Alamo Street. And zone change requested from an R3 to B1. Proposed use is a beauty shop. Letter sent for 58. We have none for and two against. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? And the recommendation is staff does not support? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who speaks in favor of this item? Please come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? The applicant's not here. Are there any questions or comments, or if not, what do they have?
Motion to introduce as recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Salpas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6F. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 2.2.0 acre tract of land being all of the 2.0 acres conveyed to Grupo Immobiliario Salinas, indeed, rec- recorded in volume 54, 5408, page 671, Webb County official public records, Webb County, Texas, being a portion of a 9.94 acre tract of land conveyed to Antonio Castillo Jr. and Carlos Castillo, recorded in volume 547, page 205, deed records of Webb County, Webb County, Texas, and also being part of a survey, 2150, abstract 660, D Sanchez original grantee, Webb County, Texas, located north of Jackman Road and east of Casa Verde Road, R1 single-family residential district to R2 multifamily residential district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Grupo Immobiliario Salinas as the owner. We have Francisco Ramos as the applicant representative. Property location, approximately 2.0 acres located north of Jackman Road and east of Casa Verde Road. Zone change request from an R1 to an R2. Proposed use is a multifamily complex. Letter sent for 27. We have none for and none against. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? And the recommendation is staff supports? And proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening, PNC Commission. My name is John Temvasquez Garcia. Here representing Ramos Engineering. We are in favor and I'm here for any questions or comments.
How many units or what sort of multifamily complex?
The site plan is still being processed. They want to get the zone changed first before they proceed, but they did say they're just aiming for a small multifamily complex, concrete pavement.
But this property still needs to be platted, right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I guess, Monty, comment is again, just more traffic on Casa Verde. I mean, we all know how congested it is. It is what it is.
Yeah, and do you, is there any plans to widen Casa Verde?
So what we've done recently in our thorough plan, we added Casa Verde Road to hopefully bring some fu- funding to this area so we can widen it. Possibly put a bike trail, bus stops. And, and the reason for that is, you know, down the road, you have the university. So this potentially could be housing in the future for students. That what we like, there, there are certain things we like about it. One, it's the bu- this is a good residential multifamily buffer from the businesses and transitions to the houses, so that, that helps the area. And also, if somebody lives there and they doesn't have a car, they can walk to Whataburger, McDonald's, you know. It offers walkability in the area.
Walking in Laredo, it's awesome.
Wow, what a concept.
Thank you. Turn off the sun every once in a while.
Yeah, no kidding.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against this item?
Hello, my name is Teresita Wickley. I am representing my mom. She's sitting over there, Socorro Castillo, Maria Castillo. This property has been, the actual, if you can put the map, I don't know who has the map. The, the portion around that property, the two acres, that was actually owned previously by my uncle, my mom's brother, and the other property is owned by my mom. And we've had it for 50 years. We were there when it was nothing. The only thing that we can, we're concerned about, and I'm glad that, Mr. Ramos is here, is I would like to know some things, since it's never been platted. It's still raw land inside the city of Laredo, and we have animals, and it is for agricultural use. So that's my concern is that if they make the change, what is it going to do? Because it's been like agricultural use forever. And if they are planning on doing something, it is a two-acre tract with the plumbing in the front, the, the one with the, yeah, that one. The, the property there on that, on that portion that, that is on Casa Verde Road, years ago, when my dad gave the Eastman rights, they had mentioned that they were going to extend the water, and that's what they did, right? Because that was the future purpose. And my dad gave the Eastman rights to the city back then. And basically, what we're concerned is of the drainage. Because previously, before the property was sold not too long ago, they had requested, the owners had requested that in order for them to purchase it, that the drainage be used on the agricultural portion of it. And that's my concern, especially because IBC down, down the road on Jackman, they did the same thing to us, tilted kilt, did the same thing. And they basically created a water drainage, and I'm afraid of that. One, because the flood zoning and all that stuff that, you know, we're Laredo, we'll never know, right? Till it rains. We're concerned about their use of drainage, especially if it's a two-acre piece of land. What is the Eastman's, what are, what are, they, we do have a utility Eastman, which is 150, 8, 150-year-old fence line that belonged to all the Jackmans from previous. And we just inherited that fence line, and that fence line actually goes all the way to the far end tip of the property. And we, my mom owned 7.94 acres of that area. So we're concerned about the removal of that fence. We're concerned about the drainage, about the planning, making sure that it does get platted. Surveyed also. And if they do have a, a setback Eastman, especially if they're going to use the, the, the entrance, that they don't try and use the entrance closest to our entrance of what we use for the ranch, for the property. We do have horses. We have FFA animals there. We have lambs, goats. You know, you name it, we have chickens. So we're just concerned about that. And it is a nice place for us to have, you know, especially in the city of Laredo, being available for that purpose. Since I was a little girl, we always had the FFA animals there. So we're concerned about that. And I would like to, Mr. Ramos, to actually explain that portion of us, you know, what their plans are. Because if it is an apartment complex, where is the entrance, the drainage, the parking? What is their proposed size of, of the complex? And just information, because they're very vague. Very, very vague. And we've already attempted to ask them, you know, the, the use. We, we are not for or against. We're okay with it. It's just, those are our concerns. And I do not want for construction to start, and we don't have a fence. The fence is removed on the front, the fence is removed on the side, and our animals are still out there. Mr. Ramos.
Thank you.
Do you have any, as far as what she, can you comment to anything that she mentioned, or give her some clarity?
John Temvasquez from Ramos Engineering.
Commissioner.
Mr. Ramos wasn't able to attend. Further points will be addressed and we can address them. He did, for sure, did, I don't know if I'm bothering you, he had already prepared a survey, just to clarify. But we start going to the planning process. All the issue, or the comments about drainage, all that will be addressed at one-stop shop. It has to be approved by the city. We cannot throwback. We have to move forward. That's, other comments will be addressed at one-stop shop to make sure that we comply and we don't mess up her lot.
But had that, had that information been shared with, with owners?
We're, we're still on the process of a zone change. Once we approach preliminary plat and start going to one-stop shop, we can communicate with her once we make-
Oh, so you haven't gone, that's okay. That information's not-
They're just trying to get a zone change to be able to move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I, I think what we could do to help out the situation, because sometimes, you know, people don't, don't understand when you say plat.
Yeah.
Eastmans and drainage and everything. Maybe we could have a meeting at our office. And that way, that way we can sit down with the engineers and we can explain all the different details of what he means, what he says, we have to go to one-stop shop and things of that nature. I think that would help the situation. So you'd be more at ease with what they're doing.
Yes, well, we're, we're just concerned for the animals that are there now. And they actually jumped the fence when they were doing the survey, and they didn't tell us when they were going to do it. So it was like, okay, who's there? You know, they're animals, and we had FFA animals there too, so we didn't know. But also, was this the only notice that was sent?
For this particular meeting, yes.
Okay, because we didn't, we just got this, and we didn't know if it was for or against or what it was about. We just, we just wanted to know what the, what the process was.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and get your information, and that way we can coordinate a meeting so that we just answer those questions.
That'd be good. Thank you.
And what is the proposed timeline for the construction?
Or enough depending on, for the proceeding with the zone change.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak for or against? What sort of action would the commissioner like to take?
Motion to approve subject comments.
So we, we have a motion to support staff's recommendation?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 6G. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on Lot 1, Block 1, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase 14, located at 1119 Fenwick Drive, Suite 206.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Laura Mendiola as the owner. We have Las Palacas grown wine. And Francis Moreno as applicant. And we also have Francis Moreno as representative. Property location, we have Lot 1, Block 1, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, located at 1118 Fenwick Drive, Suite 206, which is 2,639 square feet. We have a zone change request for a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is for a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent for 18. We have none for and none against. Some background, so there was an ordinance of 2020-0-159, which was a special use permit. This was approved by city council on December 7th for a restaurant serving alcohol. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zone change signage? Zoning map? Future land use map? And the recommendation is staff does not support? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Hello, for the record, my name is Maribel Garcia, and I will be assisting Ms. Francis with her city permits and if she gets approved with her TABC licensing. It is correct, back in 2020, I did represent the previous owners, and they did get their liquor license. I know that back then, while there was a brand new plaza, it's only been there for, what, almost four years? And with my experience, I did go, there's another restaurant there, Mulas. So I went there three times. One for lunch, one time for lunch, the other one for dinner, and then I went back on Wednesdays. So I know that the concern is the parking lot. So when I went there, most of their business is takeout or delivery. There was not a lot of people. And there, on the first side of the, because there's two buildings. I think that's A where Mulas is, and they're going to be at the other end. So she's going to explain more about her concept, but as I said, I don't think it will interfere with any of the businesses. Some are by appointment, and the other ones, they close at 5:00, and some of the units are also vacant. So.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Do you know if Mulas sells alcohol?
They don't. Okay, thank you. No, they don't.
The previous special use permit that you said was done in 2020, with ours operation the same as your one here, or really different?
Oh, no, they have the late hours, and it was approved by, well, supported by staff. So that went smoothly. There were no issues, and they had the late hours from Monday through Sunday, I believe.
Till 2:00 in the morning?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
One of the, the reason why I went and leased this property, I mean, I have over 20 years of, of experience in restaurants, was precisely the parking lot. There was no, if you go back to one of your pictures that you took, there's nobody parked. After 4:00 in the afternoon, there's no traffic. There's, you can see there's, the parking lot is practically empty. Especially in, on weekends, there's just one spa, one I specialist, that restaurant, and another, I think, some clinic. But there's mainly no use for the parking space after 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, which would be our main focus. And we will be serving steaks, seafood, and pasta. So our beverages, like alcohol, will mostly be a compliment for our meals. Our ticket items that we sell in the three restaurants that we have are mainly 80, 20, 70, 30. So alcohol is, is just a compliment. We usually do breakfast, lunch, and dinner, which is why we have these hours, especially with all the new buildings, and I see that the permit before was very close to this location. So that would really benefit us if we do, are granted these hours and, and the liquor license, because we can be competitive. That's one of the things that Mulas does not serve alcohol, and they're basically empty. So I don't want that to happen to us. And this is, we're on the other building. This building has only two suites that are local, that have-
Businesses.
Have businesses there, and then the other ones are empty. So it's a very good opportunity for us as a restaurant, because we have plenty of parking space. It's basically empty in the afternoons. There's nobody there. We pretend to have 13 indoor tables. The outdoor table will mainly be used for smokers. We signed an agreement with the, with the property owner that we will not have any, any speakers or any loud noise. We do not pretend to have that. Our main focus is, is our restaurant, is our meals. We, we, we have upscale restaurants across, and I can say I have two of the best restaurants in New Laredo. And we pretend to have this across over here, and I know that there's going to be a lot of new restaurants coming in, you know, from, from big cities and stuff. So we want to really get the opportunity now that this, this competition will be coming in, and we're, we're locals, and, you know, I hope with that, we can be helped with, with this situation. But there's, as you can see in this picture, we have plenty of parking.
How late will you be keeping the kitchen open? Because I know you-
1:00 in the afternoon.
How late?
I mean, sorry, 1:00 in the, in the evening. We, I usually, because there's a lot of concerts, there's a lot of things, night activity close by, and that's why I always serve meals late, because- And that's why I always serve meals late, because even if somebody had something to drink, food is very important for your alcohol consumption. So I always, always have a late kitchen open.
Great. Question about your hours. I see you, are you, you said breakfast, lunch and dinner. See here, Sunday through Wednesday, you open at eight AM? And then Thursday to Saturday, you open at eleven?
No, no, it should be eight. I spoke to Didri, she said that there's, there was an error there.
Okay. Thank you.
The only concern I have is parking. There's not enough parking spaces. And I know you said there's two buildings that are empty. Gets, they're going to be eventually people in there. So that means eventually they're going to take up the, the property that belongs to them, the parking belongs to them.
Exactly.
Makes it harder.
Well, that's, that's why it's so weird to me that in twenty twenty, you know, this was also available and it was permitted. I don't know.
There was, there was no tenants there, right? The tenant?
Right, it was early on in the project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The zones that are around this, this particular business are B three zones. There's also a park there. It does have some good separation from residential. But the formula for parking is what's the problem.
Causing the problem.
Yeah, so if you just go the math, she short thirty-seven parking spaces. But there is an ordinance that allows that within a thousand feet, if she was able to get parking from a neighbor, the, the neighboring businesses, if she were to work out an agreement for evening, you know, evening parking or to help her with her, her restaurant hours, that would comply. That would comply and that would, you know.
The, the, the business is next to me for the five.
Right, so there might be some potential to ask if, you know, to use those parking spaces if possible. That happens quite often. There's, there's an open land in the back that potentially could, could be some extra parking. So we do, it is possible to, to get open if we can get those parking spaces. And that would just take an agreement between the owners. You know. Just a quick question on that. So if I own the property next to her and I sign off my after five and again, I sell my property or I get rid of it, right? I'm renting it, I'm out. That means that the owners that own the property cannot read that, because he rented out unless it's from eight to five. She'd have to have some.
She'd have to have something on writing.
Yeah, because it's not fair to whoever's going to, well, it's not whoever's going to take that property at the end of the day. Because right now it's at five o'clock. The next owner might say, I want to do a raspa plate till ten o'clock at night. There's a lot of the raspa craze in New Orleans. Lots of them.
The same thing is happening now, because it was, as it is, that as a restaurant, they're selling liquor. And now I said no because of the parking. So the same thing is happening to this exact location. In twenty twenty, I said yes and now they're recommending no. So they already invested. There's a lot of money invested in, in this transaction, because I purchased it with, with restaurant equipment and.
So, so basically, if she does have a permit, obviously, if the tenants on the other two properties change, you would have to address them in the future for you to be in compliance, right? All the time. Right? So you do understand?
Yeah, but I mean, the, the neighbors actually park in front of the restaurant now that it's not being used. You know.
Yeah.
It's, it's a shared parking, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think, I, I question, are there any more questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commissioner like to take?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit.
So we have a recommendation, we have a motion to recommend a special use permit. Like, and a second by Commissioner Salas?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Am I voting?
I vote yes.
Okay, sorry. Wanted to make clarification for the whole.
Enthusiasmus.
So.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous? Yes.
Yes. It's wrong, but that's my opinion.
Moving on to item six H. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately one point one one eight acres located in the Jose Antonio Diaz, survey thirty-four, abstract seven sixty-two, Webb County, part of a fifty-eight point zero six acres tract described in tract four of conveyance documents to ALS Laredo Holdings Limited Liability Company, recorded in volume thirty-three forty-two, pages six eighty-seven. At square of the, at square of Webb County Official Public Records, Webb County, Texas, located east of South Eljido Avenue and north of La Terres Aue from R one A, family reduced area district to B one, limited business district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings LLC. The owner is Barry Engineers LLC. The applicant, Chris Barry PE is the representative. Property location is approximately one point one one eight acres located east of South Eljido Avenue and north of La Terres Aue. Zone change request is from an R one A to a B one and proposed use is a retail store, the Dollar Tree. Letter sent fourteen four zero against zero. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Feature land use. Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Danny Wires, I represent the sellers. Dollar Tree are buyers, we're a good addition to the community and we support staff. I'm here just answering questions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commissioner like to take?
Motion to support the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
You went bad, Dan.
Item six I. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lots three and four, lot sixty-one, Carlton Gardens subdivision located at fifty-two sixteen Springfield Avenue, suite three and four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant. Minerva Flores, Myra Flores manager is owner. Edith Ortiz is the applicant. Myra Flores is the representative. Property description, location is lots three and four, block sixty-one, Carlton Gardens subdivision located at fifty-two sixteen Springfield Avenue, suites three and four, approximately eighteen ninety-three square feet. Zone change request, it's actually a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol and the proposed use is restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent for thirty-six four zero against zero. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Feature land use. Staff recommendation, staff, my apologies, staff is not in support of the proposed special use permit. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
I misunderstood, does it support or not?
It's not support.
The report is not.
I am the owner of Ramen Kai Noto House. It's a very local ramen shop, one of the first ones here in Laredo. As you could tell, you know, with everything growing, just like the previous person, what the restaurant person was saying, there's a lot more people coming in. There's a couple ramen shops actually opening soon. We were planning to do, to add on this permit since last year, but since, you know, we're a growing company, this is very our second year. We just talked to the owner of the building so she could help us with this issue. And I think the issue with this was the parking. So I wanted to show you that, I don't know if you're able to see or I should. But we are, we're actually renting five spaces in the front of the property. This has been recent, it's been two months that we're renting the five spaces, because we have a lot of customers and they, you know, they have mentioned issues with parking. We also worked an agreement with the people that work in the adjacent building, like the next suite, suite number five. And they let us use their three parking spots as long as they're not there. They're usually there once a week, usually. Our sales, honestly, it's just like the way she said, it's just to complement our ramen. We don't plan to get a liquor license, just beer and wine, because our main thing that we want to do is add sake, which is what goes with ramen. You know, traditionally, that's where it goes and just a Japanese beer, that's it. We don't, we don't think it's going to exceed ten percent of our sales. We close really early, so it's not meant to be a bar. We have a family, you know, oriented business and we want to keep it like that. We just want to complement the food for whoever wants to, you know, have the choice to have it. I've been to several Japanese restaurants everywhere in Texas and most of them do serve sake and Japanese beer. We also plan to have a limit for the amount of sake and beer that's going to be sold, because like I said, we don't want to change our family oriented business. So there's going to be a limit on how many client can purchase. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I, I, no, quick question. I was told that you have an agreement with the, the business across the street of Springfield for those parking spaces?
Yes, I have an agreement with Mr. Walker. He's the owner of that whole strip where there's, it's right across the street and there's where the, it's a pet.
It's a grooming place.
Yeah, like right next to it, there's a big parking, parking lot. And I rent eight spaces, five for customers and three for employees.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak against this item? Any questions or comments from the commission?
No, that is support. The SUP.
So you're making, are you making a motion?
Okay, make a motion.
The recommendation of staff is not to support it.
Correct.
So you have motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend.
Approval of the special use permit.
Special use permit.
So we have a motion to recommend the special use permit by Commissioner Salas. I'll second that. A second by Commissioner Rockin. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. You will be verifying those parking spaces so that we can make the calculations for council.
Okay.
That's good.
It's good. But I give a party I have to walk.
Moving on to item six J. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately one point nine eight nine one acres situated in Portion twenty-four, Torrevideo Rodriguez, original grantee, abstract two sixty-eight and being out of a two hundred point six eight acre tract of land conveyed to Charco Land Sales. Limited liability company as recorded in volume fifty-four hundred, pages eight twenty-four to eight twenty-nine. Official public records of Webb County, Texas, located east of Babolit Loop and north of Inspiration Parkway from R one, single family residential district to B three, community district, business district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant is Charco Land Sales LLC, owner Ragliff Killam the second, applicant Dr. Rolando Ortiz is the representative. The property location approximately one point ninety-eight ninety-one acres located east of Babolit Loop and north of Inspiration Parkway. The zone change request is from an R one to a B three. The proposed use is commercial. The applicant did not identify the specific proposed commercial use. Letter sent four four zero against zero. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed zone change. Both motions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. For the record, Rolando Ortiz representing Charco Land Sales, the master engineer. And we're here to answer any questions. Please support the staff's decision.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what sort of action would the commissioner like to take?
Motion to support staff comments.
Thank you.
We have a motion to support staff's recommendation and we have a second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item six K. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by amending ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh dash zero eight three, which authorized a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Imami Plaza Plat located at thirty-three eleven East Delmar Boulevard, suite one oh one, in order to reduce the square footage and amend hours of operation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Imami Plaza LLC as the owner. We have Votalia Restaurant as the applicant. We have Cornerstone Land Use Consulting as the representative. Property location, lot one, block one, Imami Plaza Plant located at thirty-three eleven East Delmar Boulevard, suite one oh one. And the square footage is six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet. We have a zone change request, which is an amendment for a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. We have letters sent, which were thirty-three. We have none against and none for inside the two hundred feet. We have one against and none for outside the two hundred feet. Background. So, and we have an ordinance of twenty twenty-two dash, dash, oh, dash, zero, eighty-three, which was for a special use permit. This was approved by council on June sixth, twenty twenty-two. And the following, the following is requested SUP amendments for that ordinance. So here we have the amend this coverage to be reduced to six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet from eight thousand three hundred and eighty-three square feet. Hours of operation was to be amended from Monday to Thursday, from eleven AM to twelve AM midnight. And Friday to Saturday, from eleven AM to two AM. To Monday to Sunday, from eight AM to two AM. Location view. Area view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And our communication is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tina for the record, and I'm here to speak in favor of this item. I did have one comment I noticed on the condition, under the SUP conditions, condition number three, I believe it is. Staff is recommending approval from eight to eleven PM. And my client is humbly requesting that you consider eight AM to two AM.
I, I have questions. It says the proposed amendment, oh, that's the ordinance. Sorry. Because the ordinance states Monday to Thursday from eleven AM to midnight. And then it says Friday to Saturday from eleven to two. And then to Monday to Sunday.
Yeah, it's, I was gonna, it's on the same point. I'm confused there too, because it says the proposed amendments are.
Yes.
Right, to reduce from eight thousand to two thousand nine hundred. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then to amend the hours from two different ones to Monday through Sunday, eight to eight, eight AM to two PM. And that is the proposed amendment.
That's correct.
And as I read it, it says support it. But then down here at the bottom, where it says, it has two and three crossed out. It doesn't coincide with what's recommended up to.
So, so I think the, to Monday, at the very back end, should be taken out. So that would just be for Sunday.
Like Monday to Sunday from eight to two should be stripped out, I think. Or, or what, because it says.
Okay, so he's Monday through Thursday from eleven AM to midnight. That's the currently approved SUP, correct?
That you want to change.
That's current, yes, correct. Correct, that's correct. So then, and then he has Friday and Saturday from eleven AM to two AM. Okay. And Monday to Sunday from eight AM to, yes.
They just, you.
So, so the first part of the sentence is telling you what his current hours are. And the second part of the sentence, what he wants to go to.
Right.
So right now he's approved till midnight and he wants to go to two AM. Yes.
No, but Friday and Saturday, if he's approved until two AM.
So that's what, that's what he's recommending. Our approval is to eleven, right? But his, his request is to stay up until.
Well, the bottom part is your recommendation to eleven o'clock.
They want to say eleven on the.
Nothing good happens after twelve. Nothing good happens after twelve.
How late is? How late is the kitchen going to be open?
The kitchen will be open until there are customers there, pretty much. Now, if we really put it, put this into perspective, you can drive up and down McPherson and Delmar during the week, realistically. I, I don't think I've ever seen anybody at a restaurant past 9:00 p.m. because, you know, as you know, most of us work.
Yeah, and even though it's open till two, if there's no customers, restaurant shut down.
He's going to shut down. He's going to shut down.
But he wants to stay open till two a.m.
He just wants to have that flexibility. And so the vision is basically, this is something that he's always dreamed of, upscale dining establishment. And so the target is, let's say my wife and I want to go and have an anniversary dinner on a, on a Tuesday night on our anniversary day. We want to have dinner, and we want to be able to have drinks and stay there as well. It's, you know, he's been in the restaurant business for over 25 years. He has a, he operates restaurants really, really well. The only difference here is that this is, it's more about flexibility, it's more about flexibility.
It's more about flexibility.
My, my only concern, my only concern is that when you leave yourself open till 2:00 a.m., I'm not too sure what direction he wants to go with this, but it's going to end up being a bar. And the food sales decline, and then it ends up becoming a bar during the weekends, when you're open till 2:00 a.m. That's my only concern. And it could be a nuisance to the neighborhood. We've seen some instances in other locations where there's been some issues. That's my only concern, is that he had, he had already agreed to a time, and now he wants to extend it, and I don't know if it's whether to, you know, use it as a bar, nightclub. But that's just my comment.
I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one of the items upon the contract between the owner and the tenant, the contract itself says no outdoor music. So he, he's bound by that in his contract, that he can't do outdoor music. So that supersedes us. We still have it as one of the comments, but it's just something I just wanted to inform you all about.
My issue is, it's me going till 2:00 a.m. in the morning and serving alcohol.
Ego wants to speak.
That if it is by contract, there's always the ability to amend that contract between the other parties, so.
Yeah, that's easy.
So what is, so he's, so staff's in the comments saying till 11:00. So now that he wants to go to two, are you all still sticking by the 11:00?
I'd like to stay with you.
Okay.
And to clarify, square footage, you have, staff has it at 6,900.
May I comment?
Yes.
Yes.
There is a little, there is a typo on the proposed amendment one, but they're changing it from, it's going to 6,000. It's going from 8,000 to the 6,924.
Actual square footage is 6,924 square feet.
That's correct. That's including office and kitchen and store, that's the entire, the entire operation. The actual dining area itself is somewhere between 2,500 to 30, 31, 3200 square feet, I believe. It's not, it's not very large. All right. And I completely understand your concern, Chairman as well, but his intent is not to operate a bar whatsoever, and I can, he can guarantee it. One, he cannot have loud music. He cannot have live music between him and the, he basically has a contractual obligation with the developer, Ramina Mami. Two, he's investing a tremendous amount of money into this place. The finish-up alone is well over, you know, I, I, it's, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. So I can, I can assure you that he is not going to do anything that would harm the operation of his restaurant. And then third, you know, his, his target market are the, basically the residents of Alexander. So in essence, he's, he's going to operate a restaurant. He's not going to do anything that would basically harm the same neighbors that are going to essentially be his clientele. That makes absolutely zero sense. Now, now I would like to, like to show you something on that, if that's okay. Just a couple of images of mine. This is, I can't ever get this thing right. So in my professional opinion, there are several differences between a restaurant and a bar. And they are the way they are operated, the way they are marketed, and the way they are designed. So I took some pictures of some, does that look like a restaurant? It's a little dark, but, or does that look like a bar? That's, that's clearly designed like a bar, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This is another, apparently one of the happening spots in San Antonio, you will. Now, that is clearly designed as a bar. And, you know, if you walk into some of our local establishments that are Bar and Grills, you'll notice that the focal point is typically the bar. Applebee's, the bar. Chili's, the bar. These are the places. Now, the owner of the restaurant, now, obviously, I don't have pictures of the interior because it's under construction, but if you'll notice, I do have, this is, this is the floor plan of how it's going to be built. So here's the main entrance. As you're walking in, you'll notice that it's being designed as a traditional sit-down restaurant. The bar is in the back because, again, it's secondary to its food sales. He estimates that the food alcohol sales are somewhere between maybe 70, 30, 80, 20.
Yeah, but some restaurants are designed like that where they throw it to the back because that's where everybody had to drink. If they're going to eat, they go over there, but this is our main area. So if you go to San Antonio, Austin, majority, a lot of restaurants are built like that, that are bars. They put their plate bars over here, and then at 12:00 o'clock, all these people just start moving around to chairs, get their drinks, and come and sit down. It doesn't matter where the bar is. But a lot of them are built like that with the bars in the back.
Now, I, I, I will say Taco Palenque is open 24/7, and they sell beer until 2:00 a.m. And they're very, very close to residential on the Fearsome. We have Republika that's directly across the street, that stays open very, very late, and they're a restaurant serving alcohol. Border Foundry is another example as well. I can tell you that friends, couples, you know, we've had dinner there, and I can tell you that we've stayed till Border Foundry until 2:00 a.m. And I've never, I've never, you know, in my opinion, Border Foundry is not a bar. It's a restaurant serving alcohol. This is an upscale establishment. The ambiance is going to be similar to, yes, the ambiance, you're talking about plates, $25 enough. The ambiance is going to be similar to going, not the food, the ambiance is going to be similar to going to Palenque Grill. It's a family establishment. And typically, again, you know, the, the, when it comes to, let's say, the issue of restaurants serving alcohol and neighborhoods, typically the issue is noise. They're not going to have any live music. They're not going to have outdoor, any outdoor loud music. They have sufficient parking. They have excellent circulation within the retail center in and out. So I, I just, you know, he's just asking for a chance to operate his restaurant, to provide the utmost flexibility to his clients. And, and I think, given, given these very, very uncertain economic times, you know, I, I personally feel that we should support individuals like this who are putting this type of money on the line right now. Is there outdoor dining? Is there outdoor dining? Yeah, there will be.
So this is going to be my comment. The, the location sits in a particular zoning, and it abuts a residential area. What he's asking is for a special use permit to operate outside of what the normal bounds would be. So what you're asking for is for him to operate past a normal time that wouldn't, normally could cause nuisance to the neighborhood. People at 2:00 in the morning, 1:45, they're in a parking lot, talking, laughing, killing out, whatever. I mean, you can't control who goes in, who comes out. So I'm just thinking of the residence and where it situates. The zoning that it currently is, it was supposed to be Professional Plaza, we allowed a restaurant, or supported a restaurant because it was going to be a restaurant. I'm just concerned that anything past 12 to two, it becomes a nightly type area. And that's, that's where I'm going to say.
Let's break it down. Not because it's anywhere else, because it's in the neighborhood. Now, I would support till 12:00, six, maybe a six-month probation to see. And then come back after six months while it's open and try to move it to 2:00. But it's, it's hard to say in a neighborhood to 2:00 in, in the morning.
My God. So this is a public, I mean, yeah, I, I completely understand, and I mean, all I can say is that, you know, he's, he's building a restaurant that serves alcohol. It's not a bar. He's not going to have live music. He's investing a ton of money in this, and he's fully aware that this is under the conditions of an SUP. And given the amount of money that he's investing, again, he is not going to do anything to essentially hurt the, the operation of, because, because, I mean, we, we, we all know that an SUP can be revoked. Bottom line. Bottom line.
Any other questions for the applicant? More questions. Thank you.
Make a motion to close the vote.
This is a public answer, so make sure there's no odor. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would speak against this item or for this item? If not, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Make a recommendation to close the public hearing and to approve the stack, they grant the special use permit, but with the hours that they state that they close by 11:00 p.m.
So we have a motion to support staff regulation as noted by Commissioner Rangell?
I'd second that if you move it to 12:00 p.m.
I'm okay with that.
Again? What's that?
I second that if you move it from eight to 12:00 p.m., then come back at six months.
I'm fine with that. And look at it.
You're fine with the amendment? So please amend it.
So what we're asking for is, you change your amendment to midnight?
Midnight, correct.
And the life of the SUP is for six months?
Correct.
To come back?
To, they, to come back and see, and move it to two, if, if that's okay.
You got that? You understand?
Okay, so we have a corrected motion? And a second by Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against? Are you against or are you?
Against.
Yes? Okay. You're against, too? So let's just show hands for, for the record. All in favor of the motion? And against? So, 42. Motion carries. We're now moving down to the consideration of the following preliminary plaits and preliminary replats. Preliminary consideration of the plat of lot 35 dash E, Rancho Penitas, West Unit 7. The tent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Alberto Esteban Ortiz, engineers Alfredo Guerra, Guerra Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is not applicable as this tract is within the HJ. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Engineer record, or anybody speak on this item?
The engineer is not here in the audience.
Preliminary, what, does the commission wish to do on this one?
Nobody's here to talk about the comments.
The side item was tabled time certain at the last meeting because, again, the engineer was not here.
I moved to table it.
Time certain.
Thank you.
So we have a motion of Commissioner Wang, second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven B, preliminary consideration of the plat of Laredo Logistics at Port Laredo Industrial Park, Phase 1. The tent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Harry Gramaki, engineers Holland Engineering and Serving. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this three-lot development is M1 and M2. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Applicant engineer, anyone?
Not in the audience.
Motion to table.
Time certain? Motion to table time certain. And a second by Commissioner Wang. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven C. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Pinnacle Center, FM 1472, Unit 7. The tent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is FM 1472 Investments, engineers Gilpin Engineering. Proposed use is industrial, and the zoning, zoning for this five-lot development is M1. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. I don't see the applicant or engineer record. What's the commission wish to do on this one?
Motion to table time certain.
Yeah, motion to table time certain. Commissioner Wang?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion.
Just for the record, you can, you can see that the red on my, my list is the confirmation that we've called the engineer, that they said that they were going to attend. So Joanne at our office, she, she does that for us. Look, I have this.
Okay.
And it's not there.
Moving on to item seven B. I know there is an email on this one. So I'm going to read this one to record. Item seven D. Preliminary consideration of the replat of lot one, block one, Kilam Industrial Park, Unit 17. The tent is industrial.
Applicant is Jorge Barragan, CEI Engineering. Engineers James Temple. Proposed use is industrial. The zoning for this one lot development is M1. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The replat of the industrial park. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. I do have notes on mine, and I have an email saying applicant won't be able to attend. See email, and the email does say that applicant does comply with the comments provided by staff.
Motion to approve that.
So we have, we have a motion to approve.
Would it be subject to comments?
Subject to comments.
Second.
So we have motion subject comments by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Sartas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven E. Preliminary consideration of the replat of lot one, block 10, Kilam Industrial Park, Unit 27, into lot 1A. Block 10, Kilam Industrial Park, Unit 27. The tent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is PTC AA Texas, engineers NBC Engineers. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is M1. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The plat and the proposed replat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the applicant engineer?
Evening. Not an engineer, I'm the buyer of the property, and Pilot Flying J is my tenant. So here to answer any questions, if you have any, if I can.
You concur with the comments that are listed on the?
Yeah, yeah, and Pilots were, their team, we found out yesterday that we were on the agenda today, so their team couldn't get down here. So I'm in San Antonio, I came down. They're working on all that to get everybody information that was on the comments. They're working on all that to get everybody information that was on the comments.
Well, thank you for, for coming.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the commission? If not, what sort of action would they like, they'd like to take?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, subject to the comments.
We have a motion to approve, subject to comments?
Second.
Oh, thank you, you got that. Second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to Item 7F, preliminary consideration of the plat of D&amp;J Alexander, Phase 15, Alexander Crossing Plaza, Lot 4, Block 1, the tent is commercial.
Yes, for the record, applicant is D&amp;J Alexander Investments, investment engineers Premier Engineering, proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one lot development is B3. Location view? Area view? Street view? Proposed plat? Comments from planning? Traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Thank you. Is the applicant engineer?
For the, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sergio Narvaz with Premier Engineering for the record, we concur with the comments provided by the staff, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. There's no comments or questions, what, what's, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve, subject to comments.
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Salpas?
Sure.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to Item 7G, preliminary consideration of the plat of D&amp;J Alexander Subdivision, Phase 23, 33, I'm sorry, the tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is D&amp;J Alexander Investment, engineers Premier Engineering, proposed use is residential, and the zoning for the 60-lot development is R1. Location view? Area view? The proposed plat? Comments from planning? Fire? Traffic safety? Parks and leisure? And the proposed motion?
Can you, can you go back to the, ahí?
¿Está en Casa Verde? ¿O dónde está?
This is university. Yeah, and so that's convenient, and this is all this.
Very much, Mr. Chairman, Sergio Narvaz with Premier Engineering, commissioners. Yes, it's near to Casa Verde, it's, if you go to the University Boulevard, it's at the end of the street, then it's near to Casa Verde, and it's a residential plat with 61 lots.
And it's right close to the other one that you were just approved before, right?
That you were just approved of that, is that allowed?
Correct. And we concur with the...
Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other questions or comments, what sort of action would the commission like to take?
Make a motion that we approve it subject to their comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to Item 7H, preliminary consideration of the plat of Shiloh Crossing Subdivision, Phase 8, the tent is commercial.
For the record, applicant is Kilim Ranch Properties, engineers Mesquite Engineering, proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this three-lot development is R1, B3, and B4. Location view? Area view? Street view? The proposed plat? Comments from planning? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Can you go back?
Ay.
Is the applicant engineer here?
Yes. For the record, Rolfo Morales with Mesquite Engineering, we concur with all the comments, and just here to answer any other questions you may have.
Around the world, this is where, right there at the Lip 20 in Shiloh, or?
Yes, yes.
East of, that the...
The Coles.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Make a motion that we approve the, subject to their comments.
We have a motion by Commissioner Angel, subject to comments, and we have a second by Commissioner Salpas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Moving on to Item 7, a preliminary consideration of the plat of Pueblo Vivo, Lots 19, 20, and 21, Block 5, the tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the rec, for the record, applicant is Paulina Osorio, engineers Savio Engineering, proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this three-lot development is not applicable as this track is located within the ETJ. Location view? Area view? Street view? The proposed plat? Comments from planning? Fire? And the proposed motion?
Yes.
My name's Victor Yunadis with Savio Engineering, present commission, and if anything, we concur with staff comments. The, the only comment, just in case, that I just do wanna point out, but it's an item that we can address and clarify at the one-stop-shop, is just related to, by the first item, related to the pavement criteria following the City of Laredo specifications. This section of road is, is, it's county road, and so they falls into a different criteria, but, just for the sake of conversation, understanding from the owner, and speaking with web county representatives, I think that section might be paving pretty soon, and so that might help address indirectly this, this item. And I'm here for any questions. On this one, the way it's, it's being separated, pretty much the north lot is gonna have access on the Alvarado Street on the north end, and it's just limited to just running that, that section, and then the, the two-thirds lots on the bottom, it's gonna have access on Mayor Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What sort of action would the commission like to take?
Motion to approve, subject to comments.
Got a motion to approve, subject to comments by Commissioner Salpas, second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. If there are no objections from staff or from commission to hear the consideration of final plaits and final replats, to hear Items 8B and C together.
I'd like to make a motion to hear Items 8, A, B, and C together.
Have a motion, Commissioner Wang? Second by Commissioner Garcia, Salpas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. If I can also have now a motion of action on Items 8, B, and C.
Motion to approve Items 8, A, B, and C.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Now moving on to discussion and possible action. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
For the record, the final plaits approved is as follows, final consideration of the plat of Aral Village, Unit 2, Lot 11, Lot 10, approved. Final consideration of the replat of Lot 1, Block 1, Vista del Sur subdivision, Phase 1, into lots 2 through 14, Block 1, Vista del Sur subdivision, Phase 1, approved. Final consideration of the plat of Lot 1, Block 1, The Coles at Winfield Commercial, Unit 1, approved.
Thank you.
For the record, this is the plaits.
Thank you. Now moving on to discussion and possible action, Item 9A, discussion and possible action regarding the Viva Laredo, City of Laredo Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just a, an item to bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so on a yearly basis, when they start undergoing the budgetary process through council, they want just to bring the comprehensive plan to P&amp;Z, and then to council to see if there's any recommended changes. At this time, we're not recommending any changes, the change that was made, which actually done earlier this year, under one of the resolutions, it's listed there, under Resolution 2023 R 064, and we had made some amendments to it there for a plan at that time. So, once the new fiscal year comes around, we'll probably be coming back again to make some more changes. We're starting to see quite a bit of growth in the outlying areas, and we wanna integrate some new roadways to ensure connectivity. We'll also be working with the county hand-in-hand on that to, to add some additional roads to that road network. So that'll be something that will be coming in the future, but right now, staff has no recommendations at this time. And once we get a recommendation from you this evening, we'll then proceed to take it to council.
Okay, thank you. So then, there's no action in this part, or, or just a, just a recommendation of no changes to follow? Okay, followings down.
Recommendation, no changes.
Changes. Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Dirk, any other direction comments?
I know that we brought this up earlier, so we can talk about the one item, but we did have a discussion with, with Post Office, and their, their concerns about cluster boxes and where they're located, things of that nature, and, and it's always been, the door's always been open for the federal agency to come to our meetings so they can find out where the plaits are and everything. We just, we're gonna be working with them to, to get them the contact information, also give the engineers the contact information so they can get together and, and decide where cluster boxes are gonna go. This is more specifically for the warehouse districts, because we have a lot of 18-wheelers parked on the sides of the roads, they're blocking the mailboxes, and so, they're trying to clean that up. So, we invited them to meet on our WebEx meetings, so we're hoping to pick up the communication with them so that we can pass them to the applicant so they can work out their deal. Since we don't police it, we, we just wanna accommodate them. And then, I'll be headed to, next week, to the Border Trade Alliance meeting in McAllen. They already had a meeting here in Laredo, and that's to discuss changes or improvements that are gonna happen throughout the border at all the border crossings. So I'll be attending that, to get updated on what's going on in the other regions around this. That's it. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.